Call the Bristol Tennessee City Council meeting of November 12th, 2024 to order. Mary Lee, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Powers here.
Lettral?
Here.
Turner? Fire Robin?
Here.
Hutton?
Here.
Want to welcome everyone for attending the meeting. We're glad that you're here. There's a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening and a sheet explaining that those opportunities has been made available to you when you entered the meeting room. So as we go forward with tonight's agenda, we'll note each time with when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign up sheet has been provided to inner council chambers for those individuals desiring to address the council during the meeting. So now would you please join us as we stand for our invocation of Pledge of Allegiance, Chief Carrier will lead us in vocation and Councilman Fire Robin will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we come before you tonight. We just thank you, dear God, for another beautiful day that you've given us and thank you, Lord, for all the many blessings you have bestowed upon each of us and we thank you, Lord, for the greatest blessing of all. We thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, and the sacrifice that he made to pay the price that we couldn't pay. We thank you, Lord, for his victorious arising over the grave and that promise that we have because of that of an eternity with you. As we come before you tonight, dear Lord, we just thank you for not only those blessings, but so many more and we thank you, Lord, for the fact that we celebrated Veterans Day yesterday and we live in a free country today and we have the freedoms that we do because so many men and women have sacrificed down through the years to provide that freedom for us and we pray, dear God, that you would help us to never, never forget what they have done and we thank you, Lord, for all those that are currently serving to protect those freedoms and we thank you, Lord, for their families who are standing by them and lifting them up as they do it. As we come before you tonight here, Lord, in this city council meeting here at Bristol, Tennessee, we just thank you, Lord, for this great place that this is, a great place to live, a great place to work and thank you, Lord, for the, the progress that we've seen down through the years and we're continuing to see. We pray, Lord, that you would be with these council folks tonight as they make decisions. We pray, Lord, you would just give them your wisdom. Pray, Lord, you would lead them in the direction that you would have them to go with the decisions they have to make and we pray all these things in the holy name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bourgeois, are there any additions this evening?
No, there are not.
We have one proclamation this evening and Councilman Powers will read the proclamation for small business Saturday and Ms. Maggie Elliott, Director of Believe in Bristol, will accept the proclamation.
Great. Thank you. I'm a huge proponent of small business here in Bristol and it seems only fitting that we should have a proclamation this evening recognizing such. Whereas the city of Bristol, Tennessee celebrates all local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community on Small Business Saturday, which is coming up. And whereas since it launched, its launch in 2010, total reported, the total reported spend spent at small businesses during the annual Small Business Saturday in the U.S. has reached an estimated 201 billion outstanding. Whereas according to the United States Spawn Business Administration, as of early 2024, there were 33.3 million small businesses in the United States comprising 99.9% of all American businesses and accounting for 61.6 million employees, which represents 45.9% of the entire U.S. workforce. Whereas 86% shopped in store and more consumers, 53% reported shopping online at small businesses than online at large retailers, which accounts for 34% on Small Business Saturday with Small Business Saturday sales reaching 17 billion in 2023. Lot of money. Whereas 41% shopped with family, friends or neighbors at a small independently owned business and more than 59% of Americans say they will shop small on Small Business Saturday again. And whereas for every dollar spent at a small business, 68 cents stays within our local economy and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48% 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas the 2022 Small Business Economic Impact Study showed that if every Gen Z and millennial shopper spent $10 at a small business on Small Business Saturday, it would support 2 billion in local economic activity throughout the U.S. And whereas the city of Bristol, Tennessee supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, be it now resolved that the mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, along with its council members, does hereby proclaim November 30th, 2024 as Small Business Saturday and we encourage the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And it's only fitting that Maggie, as the Executive Director of Believe in Bristol, is here this evening and is to be commended on all of the many efforts that you put into making our downtown the very best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all of council on behalf of the city of Bristol, Tennessee for recognizing November 30th as Small Business Saturday. Believe in Bristol is the designated neighborhood champion on behalf of our community and we are proud to do so. So I just wanted to, obviously, there was, there's a huge impact that Small Business Saturday drives and I wanted to touch on a few others. Obviously, in the age of Black Friday and Cyber Monday, it's easy to skip over the mom and pop retailers and for big box stores or online retailers, but when you support small businesses, you support the many people helping to keep them running. There are 33.2 million small businesses in the U.S. and they make up 99% of all businesses. For the past 20 years, small businesses have accounted for roughly 40% of the United States' gross domestic output, which equates to trillions of dollars of economic activity. This year, support for small businesses is especially important as consumers are expected to spend $191 less at small businesses this holiday season, a 40% downturn from last year as rising costs and continued inflation pressures are causing a pullback on spending. 99.7 of all U.S. businesses are small businesses. It may be hard to see sometimes, but your local dollar comes back to you in a variety of different ways. When you support a local business, you're only supporting, you're not only supporting your town, city and neighborhood by way of paying sales tax. The sales tax money is used to support public schools, parks, roads and sidewalks, as well as fund public service workers. 64% of new jobs created in the U.S. between 1993 and 2023 were from small businesses. Small businesses donate 250% more to nonprofits and community causes. Those small businesses have a personal connection to their community as their companies are usually supported by locals surrounding them. The items found in small businesses are often made by hand in small batches resulting in one of a kind pieces. Local stores may also be able to offer customized products, hands-on service and other personal touches that big box stores cannot. In fact, 52% of consumers say they purchase from small businesses to find unique gifts and offerings that can't be found at big retailers. I encourage everyone to make it a habit to shop small. Small Business Saturday only lasts for one day, but you're, but as you're now acquainted with your local shops, don't let another year pass before your next visit. For small businesses to succeed, they need your, need your support throughout the year. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. We do not have any presentations tonight, but we do get to hear from Dr. Tudor from Board of Education.
Good evening, everyone. Just have a few things for you this evening. Just wanted to say that we are excited to be partnering with the city of Bristol Parks and Rec Department for youth basketball and cheerleading. Right now, it's grades two through six, two through five for Parks and Rec, really non-competitive. And then we've added, thanks to the city of Bristol, we've added a competitive league for our sixth graders who don't make the middle school team, so they have an option to compete regionally with some other teams across the region. So thank you to Mike Maines for working with us and Taylor Harmon for working with our staff and pulling that off. Parents can visit either our website or the city's website for registration information so we can get that started early December. It's also time for the Family Resource Center to be in full holiday mode, so we are working on Thanksgiving efforts certainly to support our families and then switching into the holiday season, Santa Pal Drive and Johnnaberry Toy Drive. So Kay Ward and her staff are working diligently to support our families for both of those holidays coming up. And then just a reminder that we don't have a school board meeting in the month of November. Our school board this past weekend actually went to Nashville for the Tennessee State School Board Association Conference and so we don't have a meeting in November. Do you all have any questions for me? Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Jingle.
Jingle. Jingle goes for her first round of training on Thursday, actually. She'll be gone for three weeks and then she'll come back and continue her training. And actually, we went to, when we went to the conference this weekend, the Franklin Special School District had their therapy dog, had two of their therapy dogs there. That's who we modeled our program after and so we got to see them and they shared that with everybody across the state. So we're super excited to have her get her first round of training.
No pressure on Jingle.
No pressure, but we are starting to look for other dogs. So we're gonna, it's a long process as you might imagine, so she won't be fully ready by January, but she's gonna work into Viking Academy next semester, but we're already looking for our next dog to be able to get ready for next school year, so we're excited about it.
Well, just keep us up to date.
Certainly, I will. Thank you.
Thanks.
There are no public hearings tonight. What we do now have appearance of citizens and this section provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any matter of city business. Response will not likely be made at this time since in most cases neither the city, the city council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. City manager will look into the matter and report back to city council or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and are not transferable to other individuals and groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. I have a sign in list here, I have a sheet here and I have one name. Is there anyone else that would like to be added to this list? Great. We have Eddie Mayberry here this evening. Tell us your name for the record and your address.
To the mayor, who is absent at this time, Vice Mayor, City Council, I'm Eddie Mayberry and I reside at 109 Sunny Brook Drive. Have a concern are that right in back of my house and a few of the other houses that are there in that block of Sunny Brook from the Volunteer Parkway up to, I forget the name of the next street of, are, it has become a bit of a jungle back there. Property used to be owned by J.C. Chambers years ago and it was pretty clean back through there 40 years ago and it has had an opportunity to grow up and up. And whoever owns it now doesn't have any intention, doesn't seem like, to try and clear it out. And it's becoming a habitation for all types of animals and snakes and skunks and all of those and we would like for the city council to take it on advisory and see what can be done. Prior to my moving there at 109 where I live some 40 years ago, they had raised an issue with the gentleman that lived there over cutting his grass because he had let it get too high. And I just think that we need to do something about the condition that we have in back of us, that they need to do something and have them to clear that property out so where it be like it was probably years ago. We can see clear across the Blue Bonnet and all of the area, we can travel through that way if we wanted to and none of that we can do at this particular time. You take that on advisory and I hope that somebody will get back with me, let me know how we're standing on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayberry, very much. We now have opportunity for appointments. I believe we have one for community advisory and those, council had a chance to vote on those and now Ms. Bourgeois has those.
Thank you. This is actually, there will be two seats. We'll do the first one and we have an unexpired term ending April 30.
So there are two seats?
There are two seats, yes. We have an unexpired term ending April 30, 2026 and an additional term ending April 30, 2027. If you would like, I have more sheets if you want to.
So can I speak to, so I'll just say first off that we really appreciate people who, who are volunteers for our different boards and commissions and we always appreciate and sometimes we have more people than we have positions. And so on Sunday, I called all three of the applicants and left messages and I only heard back from one person and that was Carol Gooch and had a very nice conversation. So for me, first off, I didn't pay close attention, but I will only support one person at this time. It's really important if we don't know people to have a conversation minimally to be sure that they understand what, what they're volunteering for, be sure it's a good fit and if it's competitive, that we can determine who might be the best person for the job. And if somebody we don't feel like it's, it's the best way that they can serve, we can certainly check other opportunities, et cetera, to see, but so, and I apologize, I should have paid attention that it was for two positions, but I just wanted to share that.
I'm good, I'm good with that, that thinking as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I also overlooked, you got an expired term?
Would it, would it be, why don't we table this vote until the next session in December and that way council will have time to talk to the other candidates and think that would be appropriate?
See if we can get in touch with it, with them and also leave it open for other.
Well, so we've got two places. One is an unexpired term and one is an expired term. So could we take the person that we, that has been spoken with and let them fill if there's an agreement, the unexpired term and then we'll take the expired term next time? And we could go ahead and at least have one person seated that has been in touch with different members of council.
I'm okay with that. That means that somebody, yeah, I don't know if the Community Development Advisory Board meets in December, but that would give them opportunity to attend a meeting.
I do not believe they do.
They don't?
No.
Okay. Then I'd be fine to wait.
So do you want to redistribute, we, just, just table it?
Do we have a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table it till our next meeting.
There's a second. There's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Can we wait? Or call Mary Lee?
Mary Lee, would you call the roll?
We just took her role.
Right. Sorry. I'm off script.
What just happened?
That's right. Yeah, that's right.
It's all good. Okay. Powers?
Yes.
Lettral?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
It just shows we're missing our attorney, Danielle Smith, so not here to keep it straight. Uh-oh, somebody else better step in, city manager. Sorry.
We're ready to move now to ordinances and resolutions. We have no ordinances on, on first reading, but we do have one ordinance on second reading to consider. It's ordinance 24-15 to abandon a portion of Partnership Park Road as public right-of-way. Ms. Bourgeois, will you present now, please?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Hutton. This is an item that was brought to you on first read at the last city council meeting. The Planning Commission reviewed the request to vacate the portion of Partnership Park Road that's included in your packet at their September 16th meeting. The vote was unanimous to forward a favorable recommendation on that request and the city council approved the first read at their October 1st, 2024 meeting. It does require a second read of the ordinance in order for it to be passed. That ordinance is in your packet as well as the supporting planning commission memo and the map. Again, we would retain the right for an easement for any utilities that would be required within that right-of-way that's being vacated. It would solely be to vacate the road itself and I'm happy to try and answer any questions that you may have on that.
Are there any questions of council, from council for Ms. Bourgeois? Is there a motion to take action on ordinance 24-15?
Motion to approve ordinance 24-15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Shall we all say aye, Mary?
Makes my job easier.
Mary Lee, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Powers?
Yes.
Lettral?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes. All right. We've come now to the consent agenda. Ms. Bourgeois, would you please read the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. First is approval of the October 1st city council meeting minutes. Next, we have approval of the October 22nd city council work session minutes. Then approval of resolution 24-149, approving a new guardrail installation on Maple Tree Drive. Then approval of resolution 24-150, that's authorizing the purchase of a Ford F250 Crew Cab pickup with the service body under the state contract with, for the street department. And we have approval of resolution 24-151, authorizing the purchase of a 2024 F350 duly dump truck under the state contract also for the street department. And we have approval of resolution 24-152, authorizing participation in the PEP James Richardson Driver Safety Matching Grant Program. We have approval of resolution 24-153, authorizing the purchase of software support for Civic Plus. Approval of resolution 24-154, adopting an updated transit purchasing policy. Approving resolution 24-155, authorizing the city manager to distribute employee appreciation gifts for the holidays. And finally, approval of resolution 24-156, authorizing an emergency water meter repair services by Reed and Shaw's Meter Solutions.
Would anyone in the audience like to address council on any matter related to the consent agenda? Would a member of council like any item removed from the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the items included in the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve, to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary Lee, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Powers?
Yes.
Lettral?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes. Fantastic. Now it's time for the city manager's report.
I just have a couple of quick things here. First, thank you to all of the staff and all of the community for the wonderful Halloween events that happened downtown. The participation, even though the weather wasn't all that cooperative, was absolutely amazing. That event and, and the activities get better each year, so that's wonderful to see. And then, as was discussed at the last work session, the potential lead exposure risk notices that we are required to send out are being sent out this week. I did send copies of those samples to council. Our utilities director, Mark Quickle, is working that process through and it's been quite the, quite the program, but they're on it and they will be out in, in time to meet our requirement there. Also, we're moving to a .gov format for our website and our email addresses and all of our communications. The .org, the bristleten.org will still work, but we are moving to that government domain. Savio Diaz, our IT director, is working with staff and others to do that. So when we do updated business cards and things like that, we will be transitioning over to the .gov address and that will be especially for the city council when we make the transition next year, changing titles and adding, adding books to the council. So that will be, I think, a very good thing. That's what people typically expect to see with municipal organizations. I think to move to that direction was, was very smart on, on Savio's part. And it's also good that we can still use all of our current stationary and, and business cards and all of those things before we, we make that transition permanently. So that's all I have, though.
Sir, any city council comments?
I would just say here, here to all of the work that's been done by staff, there's a lot that's been done from Pumpkin Palooza, coordinating with our downtown community as well as working for relief in the western Carolinas and our Parks and Rec Department continues, I know they were at conference last week and are bringing back some very exciting information we look forward to hearing. The Department of Community Engagement, outstanding. Economic Development, it just goes on and on. Public Works, I see Mark sitting back there. We just really appreciate, along with our school system. There are big lifts being made every day and challenges along the way, but, but we have such great people in this community and I'm very thankful for the people in this community. I'm very thankful for our council that works very well together and, and our city manager. And just as we go into the holiday season, to check around on people around us. There are a lot of people out there that are struggling right now financially. Food is an issue, being sure, I know our school system does a great job of trying to, to keep up with our students with, with their food fragility. So just look around and, and let's continue to be the community that we are.
So I'll just add to that, probably several different angles, but wanted to thank our staff and our community and the American Legion for Veterans Day celebration for the parade and for the celebration that happens after the same thing happens at Memorial Day. There's, well, there's no parade, but there's a service in Cumberland Park. There's, well, there's no parade, but there's a service in Cumberland Park. Those are a gift to our community to give us opportunity to thank our veterans, to remember people who are lost at Memorial Day. So encourage people to attend those events and support. I believe we're also, it's available for, on our website, a video that is about American Legion. I haven't seen it yet, but I understand it's, as most of our products are, that it's really nice. So I encourage us all to take a look at that as well. And the, the research shows that just taking time to be grateful improves our lives, it improves our moods, it improves our mental health. This is the month for Thanksgiving, so encourage us all to take a minute. We also are grateful for, as Councilwoman Powers said, for our staff. I know we're working on some recognitions with the help that everybody came on force with Helene, and for both in Tennessee and Virginia and in North Carolina, and know that those areas are in for the long haul. It's by no means over for many, many, many people. And it can get a whole lot worse for how, for what's going on when people start dropping off with the help that's been provided. Just also with the holiday time, to ditto, that a lot of people have different kinds of lives that they leave and different things happening, and some of those things are wonderful, and some of those are very, very difficult. So we need to be aware and keep in mind. Another thing that I hadn't thought to mention, but I know somebody asked what our mission was, and I'm not fast with our mission, and I know we spent a lot of time working on it, and I found a newspaper article that the last time we had it before, a year ago, it quote said that after 40 hours spent on our mission or something. We did not spend 40 hours, and I think we have a beautiful mission, but I think we need to be sure that it's visible and up. And perhaps even begin some of our meetings with stating our mission or stating it at the end might be helpful for all of us to keep it in mind and recognize. So just wanted to add, add that. And that's it. Thank you very much. Thank you for leading our meeting tonight, so. And we'll say more thanks at our next meeting as well.
I'll just add one, one more thing. I concur with what fellow council members have said about our staff and other activities in the community, but I want to go back and reiterate, you know, the Veterans Day and the Memorial Day that's soon will be coming up as well. You know, when you attend events like that and you see a lot of those, I'm gonna call them older veterans, I mean, just to look in their eyes, you know, they're so proud of what they've done. And for people to come around and recognize them and thank them, you know, it just means so much to them because they know what they suffered and what they had to go through. So I don't think any of us can even begin to fathom, you know, what they did face. But it's very, it's very heartwarming to me when I, when I see our veterans and just, you know, thank teaching every one of them every day.
Thanks. Good thinking.
Thank you all. I have, I have no further comments, so this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.